He can actually answer.
It's interesting to know all of that. I'm glad you did that.
And it's just to kind of build off of that so that when we start then looking at policies and ordinances, we can look at comparable counties.
We're live.
Are you up here?
We're live.
All right. It is just after nine o'clock. I want to say good morning and welcome to our appointed retreat. I guess because the word retreat, I'm going to say that this will be probably much more informal than our standard meetings when we're sitting in a board room and going through. We do have certain things that we have to make sure that we continue to follow and realize that we are in your open meeting spills here from the very beginning to make sure that we all get started off on the right track. So no formal action we taking today. We won't be voting on any items. It's more just a plan, a planning time, a time to discuss some of these projects because I know we've got a few things that are coming up. If you look, we kind of have a tentative agenda, I think, at least at point of each year's clock there. Obviously, when you look at it, we don't have every department head or there's no way this would be a four-hour meeting. It would be a much longer meeting for the purpose of today after we have some time to just go over and discuss. We got Brian Jones coming over from the wreck department to kind of look at the SPOST that we have in place there and map the plan for anything long ago. And then after that, Ms. Peace is going to come down from Human Resources. Ms. Harvey is going to come down and go over finance on a couple of different things. We're trying to look at the American Rescue Plan that has just been signed and we're kind of waiting to see what that's going to look like. So she's going to go over the basics with it. Then Mr. Anderson with Public Works can go over a few projects. I don't know for sure if Phillip's going to be here or not. He was sick yesterday and I haven't heard from him this morning, so.
He is here.
He is here, okay. So when he comes in, let's all put our mask on and keep our distance just in case, but hopefully he's feeling a lot better. And then we'll have some lunch, some sandwiches coming over from Devs. So it'll be somewhat of a working lunch, but we'll stay in here together and take a break. And then after that, Mr. Wood, Bill Wood, that's our new ordinance and policy specialist, is going to come down and we'll go over, I know that category is real vague, but just we'll go over some of the stuff he's looking at and doing as just a general rule. But I want it to be more discussion. I don't want it to be overly structured. I know this is the first time we've had a planning retreat in recent times anyway, and there could have possibly been one in the past. But it just is a chance that we can get a chance to discuss a few things. During the open discussion part, one thing that we've not done yet this year that we need to is kind of get board pictures to update the wall and the room and to update our website and update all those. So I was going to see when we have our work session next Thursday, if you guys would dress for a picture right after we finish the work session, or if you went to it before, just in case it's going to be a stressful one. I don't imagine it would be. But if you would dress for that, then we'll have Nina, the public information person, which needs to get those pictures done and have that lined up. You'll look fancy.
We'll see.
Put on the fancy. Your Sunday best, I guess, is what my folks always say.
Maybe.
Play it over.
Hey Chris, so that thing, when we worked on that, we never put the last one up for the last term of.
It just stayed the same with the three of y'all on the wall? Or are you talking about on?
Well, on the wall, they never got the second term up there.
Oh, as far as the end date on it? Yeah, yeah. We'll get that updated once we have the new picture. I do understand what you mean now. That won't be an issue. But that kind of feeds naturally into one of the other areas that we were talking about when I first came in is the board room itself or the community room. We had talked about getting quotes during one of the work sessions for looking at a podium and trying to do that. Richard Slater was like, "Forb, did come over and gave us a quote just for building of the podium with the electricity." You know, we'd still have to add the audiovisual sound speakers, wiring, and all that stuff. But the quote that we got from that was right at $25,000 that it would cost to build the elevated platform. That's the whole thing. We didn't put it out to others for bid yet because we didn't kind of have a general discussion going on about it. So I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to look at that and see what direction. That's going with keeping the room configuration the way it is. So it was building a platform that would work in the front of the room the way that it's currently set up.
Oh, I'm sorry. You had mentioned in, I think, an email that you were checking with Penn.
Yeah, and I didn't follow up. I had sent a message and then I just, that's on me that I didn't follow up to get one, but I will reach out to, because their company does build those products. It's not, that's one of their specialties that they do is they'll machine it and then be able to put it in. So we'll get one from him. I did reach out to Possible Construction. He was covered up with homes at the time, and so he never actually came and looked at it.
If it's later, if we use it, we need to wait, you know, right away. I'm getting one right in my car pit, and I think I'm waiting a month and a half or something.
He did say we would be midsummer would be the earliest that he would be able to do the project if he came in. So it's March now, and it may be pushed back a little bit at this point, but he did, he was pretty good ways out. And I know that we didn't have it in our budget for this year. We didn't have a line item specified. So when Fay comes in, what I was thinking is we can kind of ask her her thoughts. By incorporating audiovisual into the plan, it may be something that will qualify because it's creating a way to have meetings virtually so that the public, for safety purposes that were there, we may be able to use some of the other funding for that type of a project whenever it comes in. But I didn't know your thoughts. If we wanted to try to move from professional services or from some other line item to look at that.
If you remember, Risa, Fay had told us that we had the money to do that. She didn't mention a dollar, but she did say that we had, the other question I had about Penn, I've never been over there and seen what they do, but is it, the only concern I would have, is it going to have more of a commercial look? Is it going to last as long as something?
I think they do both. I've been in there and they've got projects that they do. They've got a wide range. They do some that are fast food restaurants and some that are more. So they've got a, they've got the capability of doing both. And right now, the cost is probably going to be up for everywhere just because the lumber to do it and we're doing wood because it's all.
Sure is. It does get a bit expensive, too. The price, everything is fine, so.
Yeah. So I think we can keep gathering that if y'all want to. We'll continue to get some more quotes. But when Fay does come in, I think that's one of those questions we need to ask is terms of where that was, where that was going to come from and then to kind of what the cap on that would be. That one, we do have a meeting where we can actually take action. We can set the budget for it and review the plans. We did get the plans that the school system had used when they redid theirs, and that was kind of the guide that they used as far as the way the rounded front was done. And they, we would obviously have to have one that fit our room. The plans would have to be more specific to our room. But if y'all want to, we'll reach out and get those others to get it. But when Fay comes in, I think just discussing where she had mine, because I know that was a discussion that started before I came in before anywhere. So if y'all get with that, we'll ask her when she comes through. A few of the items I've got that I was going to write in just during this open are more long-term projects, but they are things that we're going to have to face. And rather than wait till budget season in the fall, I thought if we go ahead and start getting them out on the table, we can look at it. And most of them are more capital project that when we take a look at our heat and air systems, for instance, that are starting to go on. We had discussed that once. We spent a significant amount during the winter time when the heat was going because we had heat exchangers that were going out on almost every unit. But now that it's going to be flipping over to the air conditioning, we'll see which side's going to happen on the flip side if they're starting to wear out. So we need to kind of be planning as we look forward into how we want to strategically start replacing those units as they're going down.
Are you chucking them out? This building or more of?
This building is the one that we've just recently replaced, but at each of them. The courthouse has had some issues with some of theirs. Not as much because it's not as old, but they have had several of their units that are starting to wear out. And I know the sheriff, when he's came over before, has mentioned that his is as well. So we just, I think those are capital projects when we're getting ready to go toward from now until budget season that we need to just come up with. Okay, do we want to come up with a four or five-year plan that we want to replace so much each year?
Check the age of everything. Sort of know what you're doing.
And then that way, we know a whole lot better. In addition to the heat and air, our parking lot here, if you got out, you'll notice there's cracks. It's not been resurfaced in, I probably said it's the remodel of moving in. There may be in a time, I guess, that was there. We need to coordinate when we're going to do that along with the City of Jasper because the water line that runs to the fire hydrant that's in front of the building, there's not a shut-off valve for that line. So there's an issue with that fire hydrant that's keeping it from being functioning right now. But in order to fix the fire hydrant, which our water department could actually fix the hydrant if they had a shut-off, that we could shut off the main water line coming in right there. But there's not currently a shut-off. That was one that they didn't install. And you can see when you pull in the entrance that there's a dug-up area where it was worked on a couple of years back. And so I think if we coordinate with the city to get that shut-off valve at the same time that we do any work to the parking lot, that we can then fix the hydrant that's there right in front of the building. There is one at the road in front of the building, so it's not like we don't have fire protection. But the fire protection specifically that was put in place for the building is the one that's not currently functioning. So.
Is it our parking lot? I don't typically go down to the other two levels, but is it in bad shape everywhere or is it more?
It's cracking all over. And whether it needs more than a resurface or not, I don't know. Kirk May can answer that a little bit better from what you've seen.
I use that much attention to it myself.
We've gotten a few complaints when people come in. I mean, part of that could just be restructuring as far as the people being able to clear. We see on the number of handicap spaces available in the ADA side of it, the cracking that's kind of taking place. I don't think we, I think we could probably seal some of those cracks and still get another year or so before we really start having to look at it. But I do know that we're going to have to, we're going to have to budget accordingly.
We do have contractors coming soon, you know, to look at these roads that we've got out there. You know, while they're here, we might be able to take a look at it and, you know, get us numbers together and give yourself to work off of anyway.
Paid last year or year before last one.
It may have been.
The out front.
The very front in the lower side?
Yeah.
But I don't go to those.
But it's still.
Yeah, it started cracking. I don't know if it's just the settlement of how long the base has been there or what. But if, when Kirk has them coming up to look at those prices, we'll just get them to give us a ballpark price over here, too, so we're prepared
That's a great idea.
On that. But those are two big, big area, big ticket items that we're going to be, going to be facing with. The others are more in buildings. I know that we've talked briefly. The Board of Elections, they've received an ADA complaint, facility complaint that hadn't been settled. I haven't seen the paperwork, but I do know that there was an issue that was there. So as far as the facility there of whether we want to relocate that in the future, if we want to try to put them in a different building. Along those same lines, we've got our tax commissioner's offices. Now, the state's going to start pushing the driver's license renewal to the local tax commissioners. So the amount of the crowd that's going to be coming to renew their driver's license is going to significantly increase once that happens. Now, it's not been finalized yet, but we need to kind of keep that on our radar as to knowing that it is coming.
I know we committed to the state control for that office. Where does that stand? Did that ever get finalized?
It's not finalized. I know I talked to Phil just a few weeks ago. We had sent paperwork over to them, but then didn't receive a response.
We did. They haven't listed things that, the person that's giving the property listing at their expense. And when I got that, I got in touch with an attorney with the, I think they're with property association, maybe state control, I'm not sure. And was, some of it, for example, an environmental association. And I said, our understanding of this from Robert was that we were just, we were giving all the, giving all the building. We're not planning on incurring any expense. And I'm just wondering if this is a list that may not apply to our presentation. And he said he didn't have regard and really waving that people should.
What's the deal that if they ever sold it or whatever, it came back to us?
Yeah, we got a reversion.
Reverter cost.
We had the deed drafted for a couple of years, probably at least a year. And I had sent it to them asking if I had, I didn't know if they wanted to invest in state properties or report to state control. And when they came back and finally said, this is how we want to be vested, I also said, and by the way, we did these things as well. And that's really what we planned.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying I don't go back down to the world we're at.
But it might be worthy of looking at the lease and the intergovernmental. I knew there's two documents. There's a lease and there's an intergovernmental agreement that were both the same time. They're in a file upstairs. I'll get you, I'll get that in your hands where you can review because the IGA actually had a kickout in it. The intergovernmental agreement had a kickout. But then there was a lease that was the same time it was supposed to be renewed. And the last renewal was several years ago. So it might be worth just looking at to see because that facility would be perfect and actually would serve both those purposes. I mean, if we house both of those in that same facility, then it would fix that for both. But at the same time, currently, we're under that process. I think that if we get those in your hands and let you take a look at it, then we can dig just to see what was there and not to, not to try to stir or create an issue. But I know taxpayers did pay 1.2 million or something several years ago that were there. And so that facility could possibly be there. But I'll get you the other, the file that we have here to see if it matches what you.
Personally, I think we should, we should look at a different building for the Board of Elections. That's just my personal opinion. That building, you know, the way it slows down and those older people have to stay in the line. And I know that's just like one time a year or two years or something, but.
I know their board did vote to not use that facility for early voting in the future, that they'll contract either with the community center or with the tech school or one of the other locations that they had had a vote that took place, which feeds me into the next topic that we're going to talk about on Board of Elections. But the, I think, facility-wise as a whole, it still has to be in compliant with making sure it's accessible. So I do think we've got to look at it, whether it's in the immediate short range or in a, if it takes us a little bit more time, I think that you're dead on that it definitely is it. If you, I know we've all seen where the House bill that just recently passed, but the House and the Senate restructuring the Board of Elections, which adds, adds some on to our shoulders as a board as far as being the appointing authority that comes from that. That is set to take place on July 1st. So the new board should be in place before or reached July 1st. The four of the members is just making contact to let, make sure that we get the names from the two parties that receive first and second place. In this case, it's the Republican Democratic Party, but the winner and then whoever received the second number of votes during the last election is kind of how they broke it down. And I think that's in case a third party ever did, they get it split. But so we would get nominations from the Republican Party for two of the positions, get nominations from the Democratic Party for two of the positions. And the way the bill read, and I read it just recently, is that they would provide four names. Each party will provide four names to the board, and then as a board, we would select two from each of those parties.
And then how is that fifth person selected? That idea?
So the fifth is supposed to be a nonpartisan that's not a member of either party, that have not officially become a member of either party. And we're the ones that are by that bill to make that, to make that appointment to serve as the chairman. The way we can, I think, possibly work with requesting both parties to submit any nominations they have for that position, letting it be known that it's got to be a nonpartisan person so that we can build a list of candidates for, from there. But then also, we can put it out to the public to try to gather and, I mean, word of mouth, obviously, we all will speak to each other. But I think the more we can get the public's input on who's willing, because that is, that's a big, that's a big task to serve. That's a, I mean, if you're jumping in to serve as the chairman of that committee, there's a lot of, a lot of responsibilities. Whoever's going to do it is going to have to make sure that they really, they really want to be a part of it. I think that it's got the potential to be a good thing. But I think the more we, in my opinion, the more we work with the public to get everybody that we can get involved in that nominating, nominating who the candidates are.
For what?
It is. And they may, I mean, there may be some of the existing members that are currently serving that their parties may renominate, and there may be new names that they renominate. We'll know when we get that out. We don't, I mean, we don't know for sure who's going to be coming through. But what we'll do if, when we get into April is go ahead and get a letter to each party to get them to start providing us their nominations because we'll need to be prepared to make that appointment in June at the meeting for each of those. So we'd have to have some conversations to make sure that we're ready before we go to June, which I know sounds like it's a little late, but we're a week away from April now. So we'll have to move pretty quick. Yes, ma'am?
Have you given consideration to the criteria that you would use to make your decision from among the nominees?
We have. This is our first open discussion about it in reviewing what the, what the bill contained within it. Obviously, the four, we're getting those from the parties and then we'll select from their list. The only criteria that the bill establishes is that they be nonpartisan, that they not be a member of any party.
For the chairman.
For the chairman.
For the four.
Yep.
I mean, now you're sort of almost going through a hiring process to choose from candidates.
Could you pull your mask down and say that again? I couldn't understand you. I apologize.
The bill has written, it always puts you in a hiring position to select from four candidates, two successful nominees to be appointed.
On the party's appointments. So when they provide us four names and then we select two from their list.
And then that board, after the chairman is selected, is responsible for hiring the elections and registration seat intended.
Or not responsible for hiring the election. So for that's.
Yep. The board is then responsible for managing it all completely, which is currently the way it is now. It's similar to several of the other boards that we make appointments, whether it's the tax assessor or water authority. I mean, there's, there's different places where that process is already in place. It's similar. It's just we're at the beginning stage of it instead of after. It's already been up and going. So we'll, we'll reach out and work and then possibly just in the way that we receive those nominations, if they put them in ranking, to where we can look at their rankings of what comes from both parties. That gives us a little bit additional information that we can consider. Involvement in the community in terms of have they participated or been active in other things that are here, length of time. Those, I think we can then kind of come up with a metric as to making a more educated appointment rather than just going through list names. So we'll get that information out to the both-party chairs, and that way we can start gathering, gathering their information for their nominees because I believe their executive committees are going to have to meet to submit those. So if we get it to them next week, then that gives them this upcoming month's meeting, or they may have to have a call meeting of their executive session so that they can then submit us in writing the list of their nominees. And then we'll have that to be, to be going over. And then we'll start working with Nina to get the information out to the public as far as anybody that's interested in serving as the chairman so that we make sure we're, we're going forward. But that is one that we're going to be facing over the next couple of months. So somebody called me the other day and says, well, they put the monkey on your back. Well, I mean, we appoint other, other boards and authorities, and I know that this one's more high-profile, but it also is, it's a board that's going to work and it gives us an opportunity to step into it. Those are the, as far as before we get into when other people come and talk, as far as when I came in to make sure and open and talk, I want to open it up and, like I said, try to less formalize it and if you've got some stuff that you want to go over.
No, I was kind of jumping in with yours, so I'm good.
We were on the same page.
We were on the same page. Yeah. That is where the ones top of my mind, too.
The jacket then rented and reapplied for.
He had surgery and everything. He's done real well, isn't he? He's getting better. But he don't want.
Okay. That's what I, I think we'll, as we put it out, we'll find, we'll find who has an interest. I think that it's been something that a few people in the fashion. I did have one that had reached out in a, I want to say a Facebook Messenger comment at one point that had expressed a desire in his, he was frustrated because it was when the bill had first been introduced and I was just trying to, I was trying to find it online to read the language of it because I hadn't seen it at that point. So when I read it, and he was frustrated because he wasn't a member of either party but had an interest in serving as a, serving as part of the Board of Elections, I said, well, then you're a perfect candidate for the chairman if you're not a member of either party. So that does open that up. But we'll, we'll get it out and start trying to, trying to see. I think we've just got to be careful how we word when we put it out because it's being watched closely. I mean, if you, if you get on social media, you can see the comments. I think there's a lot of people with concerns. So I think the more transparent we are with every single step of it with the public, they'll realize that we're wanting to make sure it's going to work best. It does give a good checks and balance that if there is an issue or if there is something, that there is some kind of a level of accountability that's added there. So.
And it's okay.
I think that, and we'll, we'll probably rely on email to go back and forth on that a little bit as we go forward so that we can make sure we're passing that information on. I'll get a letter to the both parties just to say that we do need to get, get their nominations together. And I'll work with Mr. Landry on making sure that the language in that fits the bill correctly. Because I just, I think if we get them involved now, then that'll help quite a bit as we go forward. But any more that y'all got under the open discussion category? I don't know that we could ever find a way to have done that in exactly 30 minutes, but we just did that in exactly 30 minutes. Looking at the way we broke down the calendar, I really was thinking this could go a completely different direction. So as we, as we kind of go through, when we've got the names, I'm just going to, as we reach each point, go ahead and get Brian to come up. If you need to pull up another chair for Sam, if you need, need him with you for backup.
I can't hear you.
We're not that far back. Yeah, just go ahead and pull another chair. I just sent one over there just to have it a little bit came in. This is, this is probably one of the bigger areas for our current year in terms of coming up with our direction of what we want to do facility-wise. I know that we've, you know, the SPOST that was passed and started being collected this past July, had a 10% designation for Parks and Rec. And I know that part of that was for either expansion or remodel. And there was a lot of discussion as to what was going on. But we never had a master plan on what steps we wanted to take in, you know, whether it's field expansion or field rehab, or if it was, you know, we talked about lights and walking. So what, this is probably the one thing that drove me to want to try to call this meeting and see if we could have everybody get together is to make sure that we all got on the same page, that we can start taking the steps to be active in handling that. And I know that we've got a lot of volunteers working with the Parks and Rec Board. There's the advisory board there that's very interested and involved as well. But I think that once we kind of have a master plan of action as to what we want to do going forward. So I was going to kind of turn the floor over to Brian and let him talk about the current facilities and kind of the discussions that they've been having.
Do y'all, don't y'all have some money in your budget currently to do some things before we get into SPOST or no? I was thinking Fay said y'all had.
We have a little bit.
We have the SPOST contribution, which is budgeted for about $12,000. We don't spend that until we get those contributions in.
Correct.
So that way, it's always.
We cover all the money and things like that.
Which we have received about $6,000 to date of that money. And then. Which we have received about $6,000 to date of that money, and then the other one we have, because we had to take out capital outlays where we had that last year. They wanted to take that out because we had splotch.
But John didn't have any actually left in budget for any big projects.
No, it would just be that supply from contribution, and then the small equipment. We have, I think, $11,000 in that part.
So thank y'all for meeting with us. Yeah, recreation is definitely a hot topic. What are we going to do? Are we going to stay at the existing park? Are we going to possibly go to another facility somewhere else? So pretty much all last year, we started getting numbers and things to enhance the park that we're currently at. Things of, the biggest issue that we have to park right now is we are not well-lit. We're probably one of the less lit parking rags in North Georgia, if not the state of Georgia. We just don't have, we got two lit ballfields. Those lights were put back in the eighties, and we need more lights down there currently. So the rec board back in 2020 tasked me with getting numbers up in regards to strengthening what we already have at PCR. We got, working with Southern Company, which is Georgia Power, and working with Amoco Electric, there are other providers. We started working with other outside companies, including a local electrician and Musco Lighting. Musco Lighting is one of the biggest names in park lighting. They light Gilmore County, Fannie County, White County, everybody. So we got preliminary numbers on those presented to the Recreation Board back in February, back in February. Also during that time, we were looking at other small projects that we could potentially do at the park. Pavilion that's currently right there on the side of Refuge Road, also built in the eighties, is in dire need of replacement. We got numbers on trusses and basically a metal roof to to try to work on that type of stuff. I even went so far as to get a fencing contract coming out there, and his first thing was, you know, my advice would not be to piecemeal the fencing at the ballfields if you decide to stay there. He said, if you were to replace all the fencing, this place would look brand new. The fencing also from the days, it's been there for for years. But the direction that we really need from the board commissioners is what is our future plans at PCR? Are we looking at? Everything I've been doing for the past eight years is to maintain and improve the existing park. You know, along with lighting, the track going around the park needs to be rehabbed tremendously. It's a it's a dire need of of being basically torn up and resurfaced. Also could possibly do expansion on that as well. So I guess what we're looking for from the recreation side is direction from the BOC on what you see as the long-term vision of the park. Are we staying at thirteen twenty-nine camp, or are we possibly expanding to other parts of the county? My only recommendation when it comes to expansion is, yes, we're at Old Park. We do our great best to keep it maintained with the smallest that we have. If we do decide to expand, we need to be able to maintain it to the level that's currently our current park's being maintained at. So I would I would hate to see us add a new park on the Far East Side or the West Side and not have the ability to maintain it like it deserves to be and be able to, I mean, like the park has been there, I think since nineteen seventy-seven, I think it's when the initial charter was for recreation, and before my time, they've done a good job of keeping it going. So I would hate to see us expand and not be able to maintain those parks.
I guess my thought was that we would, I liked the location where the park is now. I really did, and I think we could do a lot of things. And do we have any master plan, anybody that's ever looked at it and told us?
So the one master plan that was done was actually not done based on that property. It was done based on a hundred acre piece of property that would would have been completely moved. It was a fictional, a fictional piece of land of this would be the dream of what all could be there.
And it was based on a population of about double.
It was sixty, I think it was sixty-five thousand.
Right around sixty-five thousand.
And that was, that was my my thoughts as well, not not as much just because of the park, but because of what's there. So we already have our community center, and then we've also partnered up by allowing the Boys and Girls Club to come, and without access to what's at the park, those become less, I mean, we've kind of built that to be the hub of Parks and Recreation, and so you kind of want to make sure, in my opinion, that that is there. But we, I would like to see us move toward getting an architect that does parks to come in and take a look at what our fixed, we know that we have probably three items that are fixed that are there. We have the community center, and we have the Boys and Girls Club, and then I think Rotary Peace Park was was set that could be moved around, but it would be a pretty major undertaking to move it around. But take those three fixed items and have an architect to kind of build a plan as to what's there, and then we could actually stage that plan in place, in my opinion, to where, I know lighting, the walking path and the lighting would be probably the easiest, but once we kind of have that plan, and if if in their plan, they show that there's really no way to do it without additional land, then then we start exploring the the land that's the neighboring land, which I know requires a ton of of earth movement to make it happen. But if we're going to expand, that may be our only option for now, stay there.
That's where it needs to be.
I think so.
Have a location.
I think for the history, but I also think there's a lot, I mean, when y'all mentioned the pavilion, I was talking to Union County's, their county manager, not actually their, not actually their chairman, but Union County, because they're building their four, their new clover four building, so I was trying to find out who they had used as their architect, and he was showing me a couple of pictures. He sent me something on their new pavilion and kind of the look of what they were going with it with them. I mean, you could change a lot by just kind of, I mean, you can kind of rebrand the entire park by just changing a few things. But I don't want to, I don't want to piecemeal like what we were talking about, and I think when Brian and I talked before, and that was the reason with the IGA with Jasper, was to kind of get us a lit field temporarily so that we could stop long enough to to get a plan. I know architects are expensive. I don't have an exact quote, I don't have an exact number, but I think that if we don't do that, we're going to have the same issue where our board ten years from now is going to be sitting here at this table saying, these people before us didn't put a plan in place for us to work on. We're right now collecting, just last month, it brought in, let's see, ten percent of the splotch was fifty-one thousand last month that came in. So I mean, we're we're averaging somewhere in that forty to sixty thousand dollar range month to month that that's going into that splotch account. So as far as having the enough funds to go ahead and and look at trying to employ an architect that that specializes in in parks, than not just a general architect, but somebody that does this for a living, because there may be some relocating the pool, there may be several things that can happen, that if we shift stuff down the hill, that what's now parking could be used as as part of a a field expansion. I mean, there's a lot of different ways it could go if we just get somebody that can give us that 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 master plan that we can work on.
Since we, one thing I wanted to ask you, if I had a picture, taking a lit there to the board, is that, and I don't know a lot about the board there, is that an advisory?
They're an advisory board.
They are an advisory board, so it would be a recommending.
Yeah, they always recommend. I took something then, and the advisory board recommend, the board commissioners, what they recommend. They don't have any authority when it comes to actual, let's check, Musco Lighting.
That was my question.
And I think getting them involved, though, is is, I think, very critical as we get the the, as we start to meet with the architect and possibly even hosting a town hall or something of that nature where we can get some more community input. I think we've, for the most part, we've heard the issues and and from, because this discussion's been going on for over a decade. I mean, it's not a new topic that people have been concerned about, but it's now taking that and trying to say, okay, now we want to put together, here's, here's the architectural drawings, this is what they they they've put forth and what they can recommend, and come up with, how can we phase that stuff in without interfering and having to shut down Parks and Recreation completely while it's being done? I mean, I know that that we do have access to those two fields, those two fields are not, they're not going to give us everything we need. I know that the the old football field at at, I always call it the high school in Mountain, Mountain, yeah, now, but the football field there, we we talked to them about possibly being able to put soccer playing over there, because those, it's still a lit field, so that we can start using that field as well. So that gives us a few alternative sites that we can be using while we start the process of trying to work on our current park. And and really, the cost of of that is the field maintained, the field, similar to what we went through with the with the the city with getting somebody to mow and care for the property there. That would give us time to to then start the process, because you have fields, the kids could still continue. They won't be as convenient, but it does give you time, because I think long range, having something in the east and the west end, I'd love to see it, but I don't think short range, I think we've got to fix what we're at first and then look at at the east and the west ends down the road, because, like you said, it's not just a maintenance, but a scheduling. So if you have three kids and two kids are playing in Rover Park and one's playing in Marble Hill, that's not, it's, you're going to have a difficult schedule right now if they're they're in the same, you know, in the same complex, you may have to walk from building field to see your kid, but you you can kind of be a part of.
I have a question. Over the years, I've heard a lot of people talk about the traveling teams. Is that something we want or want the architect to say, make that hap, can you make that happen on this property?
So, and since I can talk about the travel teams as well, when the architect is doing an overall design or redesign of the parking rack, baseball is a, is a small part of the overall field usage. So I would, I would caution the board commissioners, while I would love to have a clover leaf, baseball is only used for three to four months out of the year, and then you got soccer, and you have football. So it really needs to be a mindset that, yeah, while baseball is important and softball and T-ball, we need multi-purpose fields. That's kind of like the the catch, is something that we can use for everything. The travel teams, we're Recreation Department, we're a taker of all comers when it comes to athletics, whether it's a kid playing T-ball for the first time at three, four, or a young lady playing softball for the first time at eleven, twelve. The way we have kind of done travel teams at the rec is our rec kids, our Piggins County kids come first, no questions asked. If we can facilitate the the travel programs that are on the park, we'll do that. We've talked years about hosting travel type things. If you go to any park, most parks are really isolated on how you get in and out. We're wide open. You can park at the community center, and you can walk through, you can park at the up ballfields, walk through, you can park at the back. So to host a good travel, you know, tournament, you're going to have somebody taking gate, that way you get the proceeds. You could do, you know, depending on how you want to set that up, we're pretty spread out as far as our fields go, some are not. If you look at a clover leaf that has one way in, one way out for the most part, that's what you're looking for for a good travel type tournament, whereas we're so spread out, we're not really set up for that type of deal. Now, if they decided to do a clover leaf, then that would be something that, you know, could definitely be explored.
And I think that the clover leaf, it it comes down to, we have the length of of property, we don't have the width of the property, so we're going to have to be able to expand the width to be able to do it, and whether that's changing our parking configuration to where we could expand the width in the center and then work our way out, but that means you 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 lose what we currently have that that during the construction process, those fields are.
And parking, parking is at a premium right now as it is.
Yeah.
I mean, we we could use the additional parking today.
And so that may be the the shift of kind of relocating where different things, I think that all comes down to that master plan. If you had a single clover, a four-field clover that puts you four fields and then two, two baseball, two T-ball, I mean, you could actually split that up. I think that you kind of get get creative in in how you were laying out the the spacing on it, but I I think that before we get too far into discussions, the the first is trying to locate who would be a good engineer that we can sit down and have those group meetings with and get a good idea. That way, when we come back before, when we can take action to to approve of an expenditure, then basically employ an architect at that point to to get us that plan. I know that the the city of Jasper uses Clark Patterson and Lee to do several of their plans. I've looked through their stuff, I haven't found where they do a lot in in the recreation. There's this more park, but in in North Georgia, Union County's using, CHA is the name of the architect firm that that Union's been working with that that does sports complexes. Another recommendation somebody gave was Johnson, I'm trying to pronounce the second name, and Associates, but they they travel around doing nothing but sports fields. There's a a local gentleman that works for a firm out of Canton that actually did, that Rick Jaspers had had mentioned a while back, as far as coming to look at the drainage on of one of the the city fields. But they built, they actually had a big part in in a couple of large builds. So I think we've got a lot of options, we just need to kind of move in that direction to to start making making that a reality and getting a ballpark on what that quote would be. But I think once we've got that master plan, if we realize that track's going to stay like the track is, then phase one could easily be, let's start resurfacing the track, putting lights around the track at the same time, and then phase two could be the field. But if we're going to possibly change, and that was my whole thing with with the IGA, with the city, was just to give us time to pause, get a plan in place, and know that we still have access to builds. I know that there are, there, it's not the perfect, I mean, it it's fields, but at the same time, they're not, they're not in perfect condition, and there was, I think, when you sent me pictures of the concession stand and some other things, there was, it obviously had not been loved on for for a while, so it gives us a chance to kind of use it and and get it in good working condition while we're using it. But we're not locked in more than just a year by year to the agreement. While we while we work through our plan, we may find it works great, we may find it doesn't work well at all, but it does right now give us, it was exciting last Saturday or Saturday before, seeing kids out there scrimmaging, because it's the first time I'd seen that many cars parked and and people in the stands, so it was was kind of neat to to go by and see that.
Have y'all had, what about, do you think Amoco or the, what's the electric company you mentioned?
Southern Company, Georgia Power.
Would they do any donations as far as lighting to us?
I think Amoco Electric will do a lot of donations as far as lighting goes. We've been talking to Amoco Electric since probably back during the winter time about getting some lighting down the walking track down at the barn in the park, so I think they're very receptive. Haven't had any conversations with Southern Company, they're just, they're not, they're not local, as far as Georgia Power is, but Amoco Electric, I think, would be very interested in partnering up with any type of, because ultimately, we're going to pay the bill when it comes to lights, but the infrastructure, getting the wire around, I think that's something that Amoco Electric would be very interested in. I'm not going to speak for them, but we've been talking to Todd Painter them for probably some time.
I was just wondering if that's the case, if.
Now, what they don't do is field lighting. They don't do field lighting.
Oh, they don't do.
They do the.
They're the walking path.
Yeah, yeah, they, that was our first time approaches, do y'all do field lighting? And they said, no.
Okay, who does?
Well, that's that's the very one you need right now.
The walking.
Yeah.
I was wondering if we could go ahead and start that and the study at the same time, or should we get?
I think if you did it on the back half, it's not going to interfere. I just, until we kind of had a look at what that plan was going to look, and I don't know how long it'll take them to to draft one, and we we could be looking at it a while before we had a full master plan that we were going to work on, but.
We've been talking to Amoco Electric for probably four or five months now. They haven't even come out and done locating where they want to locate everything at.
They're living in a three-phase transformer and then some lights for the parking area.
So we could, I mean, they kind of put us on the back burner with everything, if that's something that y'all want us to do for them to be.
Yeah.
It would, it would increase the lighting equipment at the rear of the park tremendously immediately.
I think we should move forward with what I already talked to them, or do you?
I don't, I don't have a problem with it. And that was our conversation when it came to the walking path and the lighting on the walking path is, I think, would be, I mean, it's within what y'all already have for for what you're operating in the conversation that you've been going through for months. I don't think that's something we even needed a voting action to, because I just was trying to hold off on the field lighting.
Basically, everything was, everything was already donated. I think the hangup was they were, they were waiting for the cable to actually come in. So it was getting the wiring, I think, that was the last hurdle. So soon as, soon, I'll talk with Amoco Electric once we leave here and tell them that, with y'all's blessing, that we want to go ahead and start working on getting the the track lighting and the lighting in the back parking lot done immediately. And where they would run that from. And where they would run that from, and actually run it from the back of the park.
Coming forward.
Coming forward through the parking lot.
Which we're still going to need, I mean, even if we had to relocate a pole or two during a redesign, we're still going to have to have that power coming back through there for those lights.
And maybe we need to get through a store's concrete all the way around. Be a good time to do it with that going in there too.
So I think we get that going, we get with an architect, set up a meeting with, with the Parks and Rec Board to be able to sit down and work on getting a master plan underway. And then, once we've got that, we'll know. Because over the course of the six years, I mean, realistically, and it's all estimates when you're looking at SPOS, but over the course of six years, we should have close to three million that's going to be available for parks and recreation. It's the ballpark, yes, I mean, that, that does give us an opportunity to really work.
In that, in that discussion, as far as the city of Jasper wanting some help with the Crowe Park, is that something that we might could do in kind, like if they need some, some of it paved, I guess Kirk left, but maybe he left.
Well, we don't have the pavement equipment anymore, because we contract for all pavement. So some, I mean, there might be with grading or with some other things like that. And it would require some form of an IGA to be able to put any county funds onto city property or county equipment on, I mean, and that's not overly complicated. When I spoke with the mayor, and I think, well, when we were on that ZIM conference, was first, let's figure out our game plan as to what is it going to cost for what we're trying to do for the park, and then see what we have that we can participate with and work with the city, but make the recreation be the priority number one, and then move theirs to priority number two. And we may, we may get a report back from, from, from an architect that, hey, this total project for a complete rehab would, I mean, I'm going to dream for a little bit, let's say they gave us a two million dollar total price tag for everything, that gives us another million dollars for Parks and Rec that we can continue to invest in other ways. Now, they may come back and say it's going to be more than three million, but we can kind of give them our ballpark as to where we're wanting to try to stay within. I think we're, we're having, it is tough to guess till after we get those numbers to, till we know exactly what we've got. I mean, otherwise, it's just a guessing game.
So I think we've got a good train forward, Doug.
Yeah, the Recreation Advisory Board, they want to stay at thirteen twenty-nine camp. So they're, they're all on board with staying there. They just want to see the monies that are being, you know, put into the SPOS account to start seeing something. What are we doing, where are we going? Once they have, you know, an idea of what the board commissioners' vision is, I think that will go a long way into starting to pick at specific stuff that you want to do.
That's fine.
Yeah, we start tackling, I mean, when you looked at that hundred acre park that was, that plan that was several years ago, that had, I mean, it had everything in it, the total price tag for it wasn't much more than what our total price tag of what we'll have available for our forty acre park. So I mean, it, we stand the potential to really do a full rehab that over the course of the next few years, I think will be, I mean, I think it could be, but I agree, you end up with, you end up just kind of thinking, okay, when are we actually going to start? And I know that's got to be frustrating on your side, because you're, you're looking at it from the other, but I think without getting that plan drawn.
Well, with the additions of the city fields, that helps tremendously. I don't know how much I can thank y'all for that. Just to have the ability to have two lit fields for practice has been huge for us. If we can work something out and get the old football field, that's huge for us as well, because now we can put soccer on a regulation size, you know, soccer field.
They're, they're on board. I mean, it's just a matter of, we may have to work on where the parent, where the parking is for parents when they come in, because the school being in the front, it's got to shift.
So I've been, my daughter has dances, I've been watching the Mountain Ed, their parking, there's still a lot of parking down there towards the football field. Everybody parks closer up to, I guess you'd say the convenience store side, up there at the top. So there is still parking down there at the bottom. So I think with that little bit of parking, positive parking in the back, I think, I think that's still, I truly do.
I think so. And it's a complete setup meeting to me.
Soccer is kind of, it's a niche sport, so you're not going to have a lot of people coming to these games and stuff. So, you know, any parking would be, would be great, but having a field is definitely the priority for us.
Okay. We, I think, we've got that to where it's going to be, I think, an issue right now, it's a flower garden. It's got to have some mowing and sprinkling down, some fertilizer to get it back to grass.
It's probably, I mean, as far as grass fields go, it's probably one of the best crowned fields in Pickens County, because it's just, it's been worked for years. So it's, it's a really nice field that just needs some love, like the city fields did.
And that, I don't think it's going to be difficult to, we can have that, that before, I mean, I know falls typically when soccer's running.
We got fall and spring.
You got fall and spring. So you do have spring soccer?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then we can, we can go ahead and try to set that meeting up quickly. We'll get together and see what we can estimate.
Does Donnie lease all of that?
Yeah, it is part of theirs, so it would be through, through them. They were supposed to check the lights. I didn't want to set up the meeting till we knew for sure the lights were going to work, because I didn't want to set it up and then realize we've kind of just been on lights. I don't know the result of whether, we just had this conversation two weeks ago for the first time, and then haven't talked to them one more time since, but they were going to check on the lights. And then they currently use the old tennis courts as the parking area for their students, well, their students are gone before the evening, so that parking is available in the evening. So we would have that spot. It's a little bit of a walk from there, but it does keep from interfering with Mountain Ed being in school in front. So that way, we do have that option. But I'll set up a meeting with you and with Sharon, and we'll go over there and look at it and check the lights while we're all there.
One thing I do want to bring to y'all's attention, that we could use SPOS money for it now. Our parking lot needs to be resealed, crack sealed, and restriped in the worst way possible. I've gotten three bids, and they are literally all over the map. I got a bid from Evan Seal Coat for fifteen thousand. I got a bid from a Browns Asphalt Maintenance for nine thousand. And then I got a bid from E&amp;H Painting for nineteen thousand. It's literally all over the map.
Are they comparing apples to apples?
They're comparing apples to apples. Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, they come out there, we tell them, you know, take a look at the asphalt, and there's some serious gaps right there in the front that needs to be sealed sooner rather than later. Come by, take a look at it. If I was going to spend any SPOS money, like tomorrow, it would be on this right here, because it's, we're getting to the point that if it starts alligatoring the asphalt, then we'll have to actually replace the asphalt, which is much more expensive than trying to do the maintenance on it. He actually turned me up to another guy, he said he didn't do the rest.
It's under forty, that's a lot. Yeah, yeah. With it being under forty, I don't think that we would have to go to an official action for a vote, so.
And I agree with that, that that needs to be taken care of.
But I, I mean, if you're comparing apples to apples, I would say the lower letter wins.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you know, Browns Asphalt Maintenance for nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and that's doing basically the community center parking lot, not the Boys and Girls Club. It's just, Boys and Girls Club is pretty fresh as far as asphalt goes. Ours has been there since two thousand and eleven, so.
What do they do that on the back, or cave in there?
Kevin fixed that.
Kevin fixed that, but it's the perpetual sinkhole. For now, it's holding. In two years, I can tell you what it's going to be.
If it does it again, you probably got to dig down and just start dumping concrete underneath there.
It's interesting. It's so deep that I could take my Jeep and turn it this way, it would completely disappear. It was that deep. We had to get the long ones.
Yes.
Yeah. But the problem, the problem that you have is all the electrical goes right through that area. So you have, you have to basically undercut and make sure you're not, you know, damaging power at the community center while you're trying to work that.
And it's more stable now than ever. When it was originally dug out, there were tires, trees, it was, you know, on the old farm where they just dug trenches with things and trash. It was, it was on top of that, way, probably thirty, forty feet down still.
Tree stumps, stuff, everything.
All right. Well, I'm good. We'll start working on getting that. I'll get with you about setting up the meeting with, with Donnie on the soccer fields and then go ahead and start working with the, and during that. And then we'll, we'll start lining up some meetings for smart techs to see who we want, what firm we want to go with there.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for your interest in working with us.
I think y'all are doing a great job. Looking forward to Saturday as the kickoff, right?
Saturday is our day. Provide the weather holes. Just so y'all know, we'll be honoring a young man who lost his life back in two thousand and nineteen, Blake Millsaps. We're going to be letting his family throw the first pitch. So we want to do it twenty twenty, but the twenty twenty season got canceled, so we're going to honor him that day. So I want y'all to know.
Good job.
Great, thank you. I know it's ten o'clock when Paul is ready to go, but do y'all mind if we take just a couple minutes to, I've finished that second cup of coffee, and I don't sneak out of here for just a minute, I might cry before Paul finishes. So if we, does it mess you up if we take ten minutes and then start back at ten-ten? That gives me very time to get rebooted on her camera system if you need.
Yeah, I guess I'll just start another one.
I haven't got a text message saying if there's anything on it, so. You never know with a live stream in the morning, who's going to.
Yeah, there's been about, like, between six and ten people watching.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'll just stop this one.
If we just take a ten minute and start.
I wonder if we can pause it.
Wouldn't we get wrong? I should have thought about that before I grabbed coffee when I walked in here. How do you miss out?
I agree. Please, would you happen to have another agenda?
I guess I'm going to have to stop it. You can have mine, I'll give it to you. Because I already read it down.
Is your brother Jack?
Yes.
I did not know that until, and I could barely hear what he said. I had tried to reach him by phone and want people to see him, I'm kind of worried.
So you just have surgery?
Is he okay?